Finally, a true story.
Good evening. The time is now 6:30. I would like to call the meeting of Tuesday, August 31st, to order. Tonight's meeting has been called in order to give clarification to the town as to what the issues that we've faced in the last week have been with the buses. We will have tonight Superintendent Himmelberger, as well as representatives from the bus company, giving their take on what happened and what we've done and what we expect to see happen in the future. Mr. Himmelberger, would you like to take this?
Thank you Chairman Spitz. As the Oxford School community knows, we had several major busing issues last week, particularly on Tuesday and Wednesday, our first two days of school. We had crowded buses, we had late buses. For that, the district let our families down, and certainly I, as your superintendent, let the families in this district down. They were two very difficult days for us, but not as difficult as it was for the families who did not know where their children were or when they would be home. We do not take our mission lightly to educate your children, and certainly, providing healthy meals and transporting your children to school is a part of what we do every day. I sincerely apologize to the committee for all that you did to field many calls and emails yourselves that you should not have had to if I and the district, along with our bus provider, had executed the way we should have. It was unacceptable, we did not tolerate it, and we worked tirelessly from last Wednesday through the weekend to get things right. Both Durham and myself sent home letters on Friday to all of our Barton and Chaffee families, which were the ones that were the most severely impacted. Our middle school and high school runs solved quickly by Wednesday, in no large part due to our drivers, who have been driving our roads for many years and have really helped us dramatically. As I said in my opening comments to the entire faculty and staff on Monday, the 23rd, the only groups in our town that work for the school department that have to be perfect every day are our bus drivers and our crossing guards. It is for those reasons that we worked with Durham School Services since Wednesday's and Tuesday's chaotic beginning to rectify the situation and to make sure that our students were transported on time in the appropriate loaded buses. The blame is not to be spread around, nor does it do any good to point fingers at any one or any one particular group. We all know, we share in the responsibility of making sure that your children are safe every day from the time they leave the bus stop until the time they return. And again, I cannot stress to everybody listening how sorry I am that we did not have a smoother start. It tended to take the focus off of what our core mission is, and that is to provide your children with the very best education we can. And we have here an administrative team that has worked tirelessly and continues to work each and every day, along with the support of your school committee, to make that happen. If we add up all of the times in the course of a day that a student can have a positive or negative experience, whether it be on the bus, in the classroom, in the lunch line, or the cafeteria, to and from class, or within a classroom, times 2,075 students, there's an awful lot of room for failure. But there's also an awful lot of room to say what we do right every day. Yes, there is room to improve, and that's what we work at every day. But we also know that we do a darn good job, if not all the time, almost all the time. And where we fall short, we are the first to know it, we are the first to correct it amongst ourselves, and we are the first to make sure that you know that we have corrected it. We are talking about primarily the four days last week, which was about as exciting a first week as we could have, with fire drills and job actions and water main breaks. We needed to stay flexible, we needed to stay in communication, and sometimes, yes, even that was difficult. Many folks were frustrated that they could not get through to central office, to the bus company, even to their own buildings, because the phones were so overloaded. So again, let me be clear, it was certainly not acceptable to me, and it was my fault, ultimately, my fault. We have corrected it. I want to again apologize to the committee, but thank them for their attention to it and their willingness to put up with a lot of intrusion on their own time because of my and our missteps. It was certainly not acceptable, we certainly knew it as it was happening, and I'd like to take a few minutes to go into some of the reasons on our end, so that everyone can understand the dynamics of what happened, why it happened, when it happened, and what we have done to correct it. And then I would like to introduce the Durham executives that are here to explain from their point of view the exact same things. Many things had to happen to get us to the point that we were in last Tuesday and Wednesday. We had issues on our end that because of the routing and loading issues, we had operational deficiencies that we didn't even know about, that were exposed to us because of the overriding issues with the routing and the load factors of these buses. Because we had the same routes for 25 years, and we have a lot of drivers who have driven with us for almost that time, if not longer, many things were allowed to be corrected between the families and the drivers that we, as administrators, didn't even realize. And I believe because the drivers are so invested in this community, they were willing to adjust their routing on the fly for many years. As families moved, as different family situations came up, they were able to deliver and pick up, almost by memory, that we can no longer do because of the structure of the educational delivery in this town. We were also handicapped because traditionally and historically, we do not have a mechanism to enroll students throughout the summer. We will adjust that for next summer. So we sometimes don't even know who's in town until the day after school starts. And a witness to that is last year, we had over 30 6th graders enroll the week before school started, which posed a tremendous challenge to the bus routing and the educational class sizes of grade 6. So because of the fact that we don't have that capacity, it put us a little bit behind operationally, and we exposed some deficiencies that we didn't even know we didn't know. We also had an issue with the first year of entirely new routing. We made a commitment to our elementary school families that we would be able to transport siblings together on the same bus. Because we met that commitment, it proved to have routing challenges built in to that commitment. We also have evolved over the years to picking up almost every student in our town, even those who live well within an easy walk of our buildings. Now, in some cases, we have made allowances and concessions over the years because of either road conditions, or traffic volume, or the size of the road in terms of which side the buses can travel to drop off and pick up our students safely. But because we have been doing this, we now have families who rightly or wrongly expect that level of service. And when bus stops are moved away from their own house, there is confusion and consternation on the part of some of our families. And it has made us, without knowing it, a tremendous challenge to try and make sure that we accommodate all of our families' needs over the years. And certainly with today's economy, and with people scrambling to work and to find jobs, we have tried to accommodate picking up students at other locations besides their home because their parents work early, and so students are with family or other daycare providers. In the same way, in the afternoon, we don't have one or two places to drop our students, we try to cater in some cases to three or four on a rotating schedule, again, to provide families with that safety net so they don't have to worry about where their children are and extra daycare. So all of these factors together have really provided unknowingly to us a tremendous challenge this year. It still does not excuse the fact that we fell down especially last Tuesday and Wednesday. Certainly, if I measure it by my volume of phone calls and emails, we have improved each day since last Thursday. Friday was better than Thursday, with our last students arriving home at 4:30. Monday was better than Friday, with almost all of our students home by 4:15, with one bus at 4:25. And today, saying this without my fingers crossed, we were almost on a normal schedule. Our last student was dropped off at 4:12, our parent pickups went smoothly, our walkers, everything went almost on a normal schedule. Do we have glitches still? Yes. We have an issue with the high school buses trying to exit onto Main Street at 2 o'clock into tremendous traffic, for whatever the reason. We may have to look at that so that the first buses out on the afternoon runs are on time, so that the middle school and subsequently our elementary buildings and our late buses can all run in sequence and on time. So the one thing I will not do is point fingers. I will call to attention the fact that everybody stepped up since Wednesday throughout the day and the night to make the corrections that were so necessary, so that we now are getting close to a normal operation. I still expect that there will be individual situations that need to be addressed. We now have the mechanisms in place. When changes are requested, we have to let everyone know that those changes cannot take place instantaneously because of the databases involved, because of making sure that the bus company knows who's on those buses, and to make sure that we know where all of our students are. I would expect and I would offer to everybody in town, and I certainly have, I think, either talked in person, or talked by phone, or answered emails, to a large number of our families over the past week, as has all of our administrators, especially our Mr. Yvonne and Mr. Barone at Chaffee and Barton, as well as Mr. Matthew and Mr. Trahan. I would offer to everybody that if you do have continued or future issues, that you please contact the bus company and contact Durham. And we will have all of that information on the website. We will be sending home other information as we go forward, so that folks feel that there is a source and a process, so that we can make the necessary corrections. Now, a secondary and a second topic is going to be looking at the school committee policy that currently is in place with what we are currently providing, and find exactly where we want to be. Because if we look at the policy that the school committee has, and most of them were ratified, I believe, in 2000, that many things have changed over the past 10 years. And everything from where people are now living, to the size and navigability of our roads, to our traffic patterns. So I think a future conversation would certainly be myself and Mr. Matthew bringing to the committee some recommendations, and let the committee look at policy as it stands, and see where and what we want to promise and execute and deliver to our families in the future. I believe that we have the ability now to deliver all of our students safely and in a comfortable, not crowded environment. We have added an 11th bus for our elementary runs, and that seems to have worked wonders yesterday and today, because it has smoothed out our load factors, and it has provided a much quicker routing. Our goal is to get all of our students home by 4:05. So if the last bus leaves Chaffee at 3:30 on a relatively short run, we can do it. Obviously, the way the buses run, there's a little bit of a lag time between the first bus and the last bus. So I want to be clear. I want to extend again my apologies to all of the families that were impacted, and to their students, because we let down our kindergartners on Wednesday. We did not give them a perfect experience to remember their first day of school. Well, they'll probably remember it, but not for the right reasons. And I have talked to a lot of families, a lot of moms and dads, who, once they have gotten over their initial anger, have been very supportive, and very understanding, and very cooperative. And I want to thank all of you out there that are listening and watching for that understanding. I think everyone knows that if we had to draw this up the way we want it, it would certainly not be the way it went in those last four days of last week. And we stand ready to adjust and to be able to be flexible enough, so that we can make sure that everybody is maybe not happy with where the bus stops are placed, and maybe not happy with a ride time that this year is 10 minutes longer than last year. But at least we'll know their students are being transported safely and in not crowded conditions, and on time. And that's the mission that every school district in the country has. So again, I'm not going to discourage, but I'm going to encourage people who have continued issues, or concerns, or suggestions, because we have gotten some very good suggestions as to how we might be able to do things differently, if not right now, maybe in the second half of the year, or next year, to improve our busing. But we have had many reasons why, operationally, we let you down. And so I certainly expect that things will return to the norm of today, and that we will continue to refine and do a little better, so that we can have all of our students arrive home at a time that parents know and expect. And that parents can certainly contact Mr. Matthew or myself with concerns. And now going forward, after Thursday, I would expect that everybody would contact Durham directly, and we will post the number again on the website, and probably send home some more announcements, to make sure that we capture the changes in their database, so that ours may be updated, so that we do know where everybody is. The one thing that you do not have to worry about is the cooperation, the compassion that we will deal with this, and the willingness to make it right. And that's what we are here for. That's why we are in this field of education, of public education, to make sure that your students and your children get the very best that we can offer. And certainly, Tuesday and Wednesday were not nearly good enough. So I thank you, Mr. Spitz, for the opportunity, and the committee for your support. And again, I apologize for all of the infringement on your own personal time because of what we didn't do. At this time, Mr. Chair, with your permission, I'd like to introduce and have come up to the table our Durham counterparts and executives, and I'd like to introduce Mr. Sean Broderick, who is the Vice President for Northeast Operations, Mr. Stephen Schmuck, who is the Regional Vice President, and Mr. Keith Galloway, who is the Area General Manager. All three of these gentlemen responded to the challenges posed by last Tuesday and Wednesday, and worked with us to get us where we are today, which is almost where we want to be every day. We're not there yet. So again, Mr. Spitz, thank you for the opportunity, and I look forward to engaging with people again further to make sure we get this correct.
Gentlemen, welcome.
Welcome. Thank you.
Whoever would like to start. You go right ahead.
Yeah, if I could just make a brief statement first. Thank you, Mr. Himmelberger, Mr. Mathau, members of the committee. First, thank you for allowing us to be here tonight, and taking such a proactive approach to dealing with this and calling this meeting. We concur with the superintendent's statements. We certainly share much of this responsibility. We sent a letter home to the parents of the elementary students on Friday, accepting that responsibility and apologizing. And I'm here tonight to reemphasize that, and you know, thank Alan, Richard, and their staffs for being patient with us, as well as the school committee, as we've worked through what we've worked through over the last week. We've come a long way, I think, but there's clearly, clearly room for improvement. I'm a parent. I had an opportunity to be at Barton and Chaffee last week, to witness for myself, you know, what some parents and children, the age of the children that I have, had to go through, and the anxiety on their faces as we were deciding which bus maybe they should be on. And that's saying that we're sorry is not enough for that, as a parent. We, subsequent to the letter being sent home on Friday, and even before that, but have worked through the weekend, right up until a meeting we had coming into tonight, I think have worked through the majority of the problems. Alan alluded to the fact that we're very, very close, but frankly, we're not there, where we want to be, where we were last year delivering a high level of service, that I think most of the families in this community became accustomed to relatively quickly last year in our first year. So we're here tonight to reemphasize that, to take our responsibility for it, to be sure that you know that we are 100% committed to this, and we are going to work through this until we are all comfortable, that we are at the spot in service that we finished last school year. We spent an enormous amount of time this summer on this, and we learned some things. You know, we learned some things that will be implemented here and in other locations. In looking back, we realized where our shortcomings were. And unfortunately, we are correcting them on school days instead of in July. Again, for that, our responsibility. So we're here tonight. I have two local experts to my left and right. I just wanted to give a general statement, accepting that responsibility, but be available to you if there's any specific or technical questions. But again, I want to, you know, I really, really appreciate the partnership, and working closely with Richard and Alan over the last week, the patience that they've shown, the patience all you've shown, because I heard what the superintendent has said, and probably many hours you spend on the phone or returning emails. And we need to return that, so that somewhere during the school year, you get a phone call or an email about a positive experience a family had with our bus company.
We'd love that. We really would.
Me too. So that being said, I want to thank you for the opportunity, turn it back to the chair, and be available to you for any questions or comments.
Do either of, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, School Committee, Mr. Himmelberger, and Mr. Mathau. I'd like to kind of just recap a little bit on what Mr. Broderick brought up as far as some of our shortcomings, and kind of recap the summer, and maybe some of the more of the specifics to understanding the complexities and what happened last week with our service. You know, I can't, you know, express enough sincerity and apologize enough for the children and the parents of the community, but there were some shortcomings that we experienced. And with this redistricting, we rolled out in the community here a software routing package, and probably underestimated, I would say definitely underestimated, the complexities of the routing that was going on in prior years here, that has been very comfortable for many years. And not only the actual routes themselves, with the numerous exceptions, alternative addresses, and drop off multiple days, but also the roads, and the actual ability and maneuverability of some of the streets, and some of the roads that actually stop and start again in a different area. Some of the software didn't necessarily appropriately capture some of that local flavor and important data, if you will, to really make probably the best, most efficient route. Also, with some of the issues that also arose was where we did make some adjustments, there is a tight timeline for us to get from one elementary to another elementary, which, as we've seen the last two days, has improved dramatically, and we can get it better. But there's a lot of efficiencies that the town really needs to incur for that to happen appropriately. And having a stop every 100 feet, in some cases, adds a delay, could be anywhere from 30 to 50 seconds. We try to accommodate that with software, but that doesn't always capture local traffic patterns, et cetera, so that's part of a learning curve that we need to experience. With each of those stops, like I said, that adds time. So as we looked at the future, this coming school year, the one we're incurring now, we looked at eliminating some of the stops that we needed to do. We needed to consolidate some to corners. We needed to really abide by some of the town policies that exist, as far as allowing children to safely walk to a corner stop or to a different area. Or also, we went by walking boundaries with school districts, not necessarily the Barton Elementary, but maybe the Chaffee Elementary, where there's probably better opportunity for walking. We did some of that routing efficiency as well, which would basically not accommodate everyone for transportation based on policy. And, you know, some of those things, they've been occurring, there's been exceptions that have gone on here for many years with the buildings and the drivers. They've made a lot of, you know, accommodations, and really provided, I think, excellent service. And kudos to our drivers, who have, I think, done a fantastic job, and continue to have been patient with all of us and worked through the situation. But making those adjustments... But making those adjustments necessarily didn't obviously provide the best, most timely service. That obviously didn't work as well as we hoped. So, we've been working on cleaning up that data and getting the most efficient routes, which we continue to make adjustments and improvements daily. And we are working through the weekends and the evenings and endlessly trying to respond to the individuals that may have concerns at this point, and try to make all those improvements and adjustments. As we got closer to the school year beginning, so we did this redistricting, we've done the routing, we've done a number of adjustments and changes based on data we received, starting, I think, on July 23rd. From that point, as we get close to school, as Mr. Himmelberger mentioned, there's enrollment policies and exceptions and things that normally we would capture and try to accommodate those adjustments and recalculate routes and readjust and adjust load counts and ridership, et cetera. The timing of school being a week earlier and not necessarily getting probably all the nuances that were happening in prior years, I don't think anybody had a level of understanding of what was going on in prior years, which is not acceptable. But at that point, we received a lot of information relatively too late, and it could be as much as the first day or second day of school where we were learning about new enrollees and trying to accommodate those and adjust those, along with alternate exceptions, et cetera. So, there's been a number of issues that have led us to where we were at last week, Tuesday and Wednesday. Again, it's not acceptable. I think that we've worked diligently with the administration to accommodate and get back to that level of service that we provided last year when we first came into Oxford in this community. It's a great community, we don't want to let you down. We will continue to improve, make adjustments, react and respond, and we've continued to focus on safety and security through this whole situation. We've, I think, done a fantastic job with, you know, the drivers and their patience, and I appreciate that, so. Thank you very much for this time.
Good. Did you look, you're good?
I'll be available for...
All right. Does the committee have any questions? Mrs. Ennis.
Thank you for coming in this evening, we appreciate it. Very rare that we have to call an emergency meeting, so you being here means there's obviously a tremendous problem. I think the first question I need to ask you now that I've got some more information is, you're saying that you received your data on July 23rd. You received data for the routing on July 23rd or the addresses? Tell me what actually you received.
Okay, great question. What we received was the, what we do is we have, we had data prior to July 23rd, but that would have been last school year's data with home addresses, what grade they were in at that time. We do what's called a grade advancement in the software, which would automatically assume that every child would elevate to the next grade level. We then adjust, obviously, the new reconfigurations within the buildings, the districts, and the grades. What we received at that point was the most current data that the district had, based on what they knew would be new enrollees, which might have been 40 to 50% of only the K children at that point, which had been enrolled and the district knew about, or maybe any additional children at any of the other grade levels as well that could have been new in the town. But at that point, we obviously wouldn't have known the massive amount of changes that would have came in a week before school.
Okay. If I may, continue. Technology, we've heard about, we heard about the technology part when we were discussing the reconfiguration. We all understand technology can work really well when it works. This was obviously a failure in technology. So, after you input all of these streets, and we started seeing the bus routes come up online, parents started calling and saying, "There is no street there, there's no pickup there, Sunset Ave is closed." All of these different things is what started the kettle to brew, in my opinion, because I was getting calls on the Friday that the routes came out. I think it's been traditional in this community that our bus drivers, who some of them are 40-year veterans in this community for bus drivers, they know how to drive these roads with their eyes closed, and they can pick up kids going in reverse. That's how well they know this community. We always have seen, two weeks before school begins, the big yellow buses running around town and everybody doing their routes. People were saying to me, "How come we don't see the bus drivers?" I seriously didn't even think of it, until after some of my colleagues said, "Have you seen any of the buses going by?" "No, nobody." When you put in all this information in your technology, and you maybe saw that some of this was not what was fact, I guess is the best way to put it, did you ever run it physically? Did you ever match up what the technology was to what actually the physical route was? Because you had the bus coming up Sunset, well, that's my neighborhood, and there's a mound of dirt the size of this building, and there was no way there was a bus going to be traveling up, and I had neighbors calling me. I had two people come to my house to ask me, "How are they going to get the kids on the bus?" And I'm thinking, "I don't even know how they're making these routes." So, technology, yes, but the physical, actual getting in the bus and having one of our bus drivers go over all the routes and come back to you and say, "We can't go this way, we can't do that, this is a pickup stop you missed, here's another place." That sounds like it was something that was completely either missed, not done. When did the drivers really see their routes? And when they got their routes, I know, I know some of these people, they had to have said, "These aren't going to work." They had to have. They had to have come to you and said, "This is not going to work," whether they went to our superintendent or if they came directly to you, who is their employer. I don't know. That's what I'd like to get an answer to there. I have more, of course. So, there's that.
Okay. Yep. Let me, let me, there's a couple, obviously, a couple items in there that I'd like to address. One, let me start by saying on the technology piece. The technology itself, the software application, is a well-renowned software that is used throughout the country, many districts, and I don't want you to not have confidence in its ability to work for this community. And it can be tailored and corrected and manipulated and massaged to know what our drivers and what this community needs for service. So, I don't want you to lose confidence in that first. Where the disconnect, there's a couple of disconnects. One is obviously the data that goes into it, and what we know and the timing of what we know it is critical. The second piece is, like you just had mentioned, that is to connect back the output of what that software recommendation or what the routing would be or what it could look like back to that local driver. And we did perform dry runs, I believe it was the week of August 9th, on some of the work that was being sampled. And like I mentioned, at the point of what we knew, okay, that wouldn't be including 100 new registers, 200-plus alternate exception and address drop-offs, which we did not know, all those nuances that are occurring today in school were not known. So, based on the information we had and the dry runs that we performed, and the stops that were moved and manipulated and massaged to corners, and not, and eliminating walkers that, based on town policy, shouldn't be getting busing, but do for accommodation reasons, those routes came back to where they could work. But it's not what you've done for 10 or 20 years. They're much different to what we, what you would need, and yes, there is a big disconnect. Not every driver, obviously, was given their normal route, because the routes did change significantly, to where they could go back and say, "Let me do my dry run." We had one driver or two drivers doing some sampling of the information to see how, what the consistency of the work, and we made some adjustments. We dropped the ball. We did not get every sampled route out and dry run by the individual driver that would be performing that work in time for them to give us the appropriate feedback we need to make the adjustments. They have been super, they are working with us. We are trying to adjust and make every satisfactory accommodation that we can with the routes, as long as we can stay within the timing and load restrictions, but we still have to factor that in when we look at the redistricting because of the time going from the Barton School to Chafee and especially in the PM. So, those drivers are giving us feedback at the 25th hour, if you will. I think that there was obviously, we dropped the ball, that we didn't necessarily get every route back to every driver where they could give us the input.
Let me just clarify, are you, you said 200 exceptions. Do you have 200 exceptions of different drop-offs? You have 200? 200 children in this town are getting dropped off in different locations?
There is, at this point, from my understanding, there is a number, and it could be as high as 200 alternate exceptions.
Okay. If I may, Mr. Chairman?
You certainly may, but as far as the drop-off, we can, we can...
I'm not even going to go there. No, I just want to clarify.
Approach that in another minute.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify the number he said, that's all.
Could Mr. Peterson get a point in?
If I may, Mrs. Ennis?
Yeah, go ahead.
Follow up on what you're doing now. I'm on the road all the time myself.
Daily.
And Mr. Himmelberger and I had a very long conversation again this morning for the third time. And I appreciate all of you coming in, and I appreciate everybody's apology, including Mr. Himmelberger's. And I'd have to apologize too, I let the ball down, but my, I'll get to that later. But my concern is the technology end of it. I deal with GPS, I'm on the road, I look for different areas, I use the Blue Book, I use a whole different thing when I'm seeking and looking to destroy somebody, all right? Technology is one thing, but I also know in this community, there are a lot of cart paths, there are a lot of more than triplicate names of roads, so many examples and scenarios, and I've been through three different redistrictings since I've been on this board in 20 years. This is the first major change in bus company. Yes, we were able to work because we had a bus company that was here for a long period of time, and they kind of knew the town after a while too, so that if we needed to change something, they were right there. I have many questions that won't address to you because this is going back to our own, my own ignorance and letting some of this go, I guess, over the last couple of years and some of these policies that we've tried to accommodate the whole community and can't anymore. But I also am concerned about the electronic situation and the lateness of it. When you sat here two months ago at a school committee meeting and told us everything was in line, ready to go, I do have a problem with that, and I'm not going to throw a ton of stones, but I am still aggravated, I offended so many calls myself. The nights were very short, the last three nights with the phone calls and things, and the people coming to my house also, Mrs. Ennis, because I've been here and they knew that I had been through the busing situations. I do have a problem with that, and I hope it's rectified, and unfortunately, there's no wiggle room. We can't screw up tomorrow, we can't screw up June 6th before school's out, because this is just going to come back and blow up in our face. So I want an assurance that this electronic situation and the busing routes and things are put in, are now up to date, and where we need to be, yes, we're going to have one or two students come and go here or there. And, Mr. Chair, if I would, I would like another report back from both the bus company and Mr. Himmelberger in a week's time on this particular scenario.
Mr. Himmelberger, can we make sure that that happens?
Yes, with all due respect, Mr. Peterson, if I could make that a little bit longer, because I don't think you get everything in one week, but certainly...
No, I think you missed my point, Mr. Himmelberger. I want a weekly report until this thing is totally resolved and we have confidence in everybody again.
With all due respect, we are meeting on the 13th, and I believe that at that time we can give a detailed report to the committee.
I think that's satisfactory, I think we can do it that way. And I think, to Mr. Peterson's point, I think what he's looking for here is, three or four days to a family that's having busing issues is a major deal. And I think what he wants to hear from the busing company, as well as from the central office, is that this time factor is really not going to go on for long periods of time. And I think that was his point that he was trying to make, if we get a weekly report, whether it be you call me and I tell you to send it out to the committee, that, just let me finish that in thought, and we'll let you, let you go with that. I think his point is well-taken in the fact that he's, his concern is that we don't allow something to go until the 13th of September, is that we don't allow one child to have the same issue for another week. I think that was Mr. Peterson's point, more so than having you report to us weekly. I think initially, until we're sure that the, the levels are there that we need to offer to our children, he wanted to hear that we're okay. Go right ahead.
Upon that clarification, Mr. Chair, to Mr. Peterson's point, I can certainly give, through the chair, a daily report delineating when people are picked up, when buses run, and when the last student has been dropped off. And if that meets with the committee's approval, I can certainly start that today and give that information on a daily basis.
And I think we should until everybody's, because that's a quick email. And I think that way, we all know, we understand what the timeframes were. I think we understand what issues we may, you know, you don't have to give a student names, but certainly you say, "I had one student at Chafee that missed the bus," or whatever it may be, just so that we all have a very clear understanding as to where we stand. On a daily basis is great, I'd love to see those emails, just so I know what we're doing. Mr. Peterson?
And Mrs. Ennis, I'll let you get back, because I'm sure I have some of the same questions, you can keep going. But to follow that up, I, my question also was, are we near the end of this as far as the bus routes? Because I would like full bus routes and stops for all, to monitor. People in this town know I follow buses, I've been accused of many different things, and I really don't care, all right? But I will continue to, I've been on the bus committee for 20 years, and I've seen the buses sized down from 20 to 10 and make it totally efficient. We may have to swing a different direction and add a bus or something, if that be the case. But I want to know where these stops are, and I want to know the bus routes personally, I don't know if the rest of the committee does or not, but when this is finalized as you can be 90% plus or whatever, in the next few days, I want bus routes in my hands, please, Mr. Himmelberger.
But I think, Mr. Peterson, to that point, one of the most important things we can, we can do is, we had taken down the previous bus routes that were posted because they were so inaccurate, and it really kind of gave, gave people an idea as to where the bus routes would be that they really weren't.
That they weren't.
So, we took them down for that reason, because we were really posting information that was not correct. I think to that point, we should insist upon our new routes being posted as quickly as possible to the web so that everyone can see it, not just us, and that would be appreciative. Mr. Himmelberger, go right ahead.
Through the chair to the committee, I would expect that by Thursday, we will have, for over the weekend, to be posted, the routes as we have them going forward, so that everybody in town has the routes with the stops, and we will post them, I would expect, if not Thursday, end of day, certainly Friday, so that they're up on the website, and certainly we can print those off in Word format, and I can certainly put those in the committee's mailbox.
Thank you so much. Mrs. Ennis, would you like to continue?
Thank you, I would, thank you. Going to go into a couple of safety questions now that I have. We all, I think, have been contacted on this one issue, that the elementary school buses, at least one of them was so overcrowded, children were sitting on the floor of those buses when they were rolling on the roads of this town. Now, I'm going to say something. I am a mother, and if it was my daughter that was sitting on the floor of a bus when it was rolling, I would be at your house instead of somebody coming to my house. When I heard this, I couldn't believe, first of all, first of all, that a bus driver would roll that bus. Second of all, that you gentlemen and whoever else had to be there, our administration would allow that bus to pull out of the driveway of that school with children on the floor of the bus. That is so unacceptable to me as a parent and as a school committee member. I am an elected official here in this community, we all are. Our first, our first responsibility beyond policy, beyond anything else, is the safety of these kids. We all have either had our children in these schools or we have them in these schools. And for that to happen, and for me to be... And for that to happen and for me to be told that, not once, not twice, maybe a half a dozen times, and I think everybody here heard the same thing from different people, because people will call different people on this committee, I wanna know if that happened.
Mrs., Mrs. Ennis?
Ennis.
We've, we've been at the, both Barton and Chaffey schools almost, I was there three out of the four days last week. And one of the things that we've been doing is to validate the number of riders per bus based on Barton and Chaffey. And we would actually go to Barton first, watch the loads, time their route, and then get to the Chaffey Elementary School and watch them depart. I personally, on three of the days, was watching each of the bus, buses leaving the elementary schools. There are many of them that there is three kids in a seat. And legally, that's what the vehicle is expected and required to do.
We're talking about little kids, right?
Right, right. It's 71 passenger, for example, and it's 13-inch seats. So, that, that, yeah, there is definitely a lot of them that have a lot of children on them, but at no point did we witness kids sitting on a floor or not having a seat. And when we did, and I'm saying that it almost did not happen, when we did learn of one bus where the driver was gonna go over legal capacity, they called in dispatch, we sent another bus to get that stop and the two remaining stops after that onto a different bus so we could get all the children to school safely without exceeding...
Did that bus leave the driveway of that school?
This was, this was in the morning, ma'am.
So it was bringing kids in?
This was bringing in the morning. We actually had to divert another bus because of capacity and ridership.
So you stopped somewhere in town and you picked up children?
Yes.
You took them off the bus?
No, we never loaded the bus and put them over capacity.
Okay.
This was, I believe it was Route 6 or whatever. And we actually have those, we moved that stop permanently to a different bus so that that load won't happen again. So as, as we learn, or, you know, as ridership changes, because it does fluctuate based on athletics and many of different things in the school programs, we will absolutely commit that we are of the same fashion as far as safety first. We will never instruct anyone to leave a school or pick up children that we can't legally transport within the safety constraints of the seat. I mean, that's how the buses are engineered and designed for safety.
So as far as you know, you're telling me no buses got on the roads of this community and there were children sitting on the floor?
I can't ensure that that didn't happen. I don't know that a children, a child did not sit on, I don't know. But, but I can tell you that what we're instructing our drivers, you know, we, they are routed up severely, you know, as far as number of riders per bus. And if there is any, we have one driver that come to us the other day, that she may go over capacity if these four kids get on the bus. And we'll move those stops if we have to because we will not put it into an overcrowded, unsafe, unreliable position. And that's been our commitment throughout. We've focused on safety and security of the children through the whole process. I know some of the issues feel as though we haven't, but we really have.
All right. Just to kind of pull this all together, because I think with what we all got for phone calls, we could sit here until, well, a little later than now, relaying all those to you. And I think the main concern for all of us, first and foremost, is safety. Mrs. Ennis's passion about that is because of the fact that there were stories that were given to all of us of that nature that tell us that we're not being safe with our children. And she has the right to be upset with that because that's an issue. So I think, basically, we have been told from today forward, from you, that she'll never get another phone call or none of us will ever get another phone call about safety, okay? We'll get plenty of phone calls, but I'm talking about safety from bus issues is what we're looking for here. That's the concern of the committee, okay? We understand that there are gonna be glitches here and there that we're gonna have to deal with, or the superintendent is gonna have to deal with, or you're gonna have to deal with. We just don't want them to be safety glitches, okay? And I think that's the big point here. That really is a big, and one of the things that was brought up to me by somebody that I'm just gonna mention and then we're gonna stop this, is, this was a point, I guess, with one of the children that was left on the bus, they didn't know where to drop this particular student off. The bus driver could not contact the dispatch because her radio in the bus did not work. And they're not allowed to carry cell phones. What do you do? That was one that somebody asked me that I really did not have an intelligent answer about, because I do understand you don't want them carrying cell phones because you don't want them texting and doing stuff while they're driving. But what do they do? I mean, if they have to dial 911, what if they see a child hit and they have to call 911 and their radio doesn't work? That was a question that somebody asked me that I was kind of dumbfounded about because I really did not have an answer to that. I think that's a great point, and I really appreciated that point being made because I, I can't see how we're offering safe conditions for our children if they have no way of communicating if their system does go down. So to me, that's one that we're gonna have to talk about and think about, I think, either... Yeah, go right ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to answer that. We did have one, one bus where the radio, the antenna connection at the back of the radio did fail midday. And we did get our maintenance team out and we replaced that, I think it was like 8:00 at night, 8:30 at night, we were standing in the yard. And we did do that. Drivers do have their cell phones in their purses or on their belongings.
And that is okay.
And that is absolutely acceptable, and it's legal, if you will.
Yep.
They just can't, by Massachusetts law, nor our company policy for safety reasons, be utilizing that phone during the operation of the motor vehicle.
I get all that. That's fine. But I was told they weren't able to carry them.
Oh, no, no. Matter of fact, we had a number of communications with that, with a situation where the driver pulled over safely, secured the vehicle like they're required, and did call us on the cellphone.
Okay.
So that, we do permit that.
That answers that, so I appreciate you clearing that up.
We do permit that, it just cannot be while the vehicle's obviously in use. Right, we...
And Mr. Chair, if I could say, if you or any member of the committee or Mr. Mathau or Mr. Himmelberger receives a call relative to safety, I want you to have the three of our cell phones, the three of our emails, so we deal with that immediately and don't wait for the 13th or wait for the next day. We wanna, we wanna investigate it immediately and find out if there's any validity to it. And we owe you a response immediately.
So we would appreciate, then, if you could, just make sure Mr. Himmelberger gets that information and we can get it out to the committee members. And I would really appreciate that, because I think it would make us all feel better if we also had an out, besides just calling him. I think we'd all feel better if we yelled at somebody else for a change.
He would too.
Right.
To Miss, Miss Ennis's point, if they're driving backwards or with their eyes closed, we wanna know about that too.
Right, and we appreciate that.
And just...
I've seen them do, I've seen one do it in Boston, and she was unbelievable.
So that's the, that's the piece that's a bit puzzling about, because I had heard that kind of, I've been in town for three or four days and I've heard this rumor about a child sitting on the floor. We have 10 of the best bus drivers in the state of Massachusetts. I've spent some time with them out here in this room over the last few days. I can't imagine one of them allowing that. So it's not something that not only would the three of us not condone, those drivers have sat with us hour after hour over the last few days to work with us on correcting this stuff, they would just absolutely not allow that.
Just a comment.
Okay.
And I appreciate that, and I, you know what? If it was one phone call?
Yeah, I know.
I would agree with you.
Yep.
Because there have been, I think I've gotten a couple of calls that have been, and I think we all have, that have been a little questionable.
Mm-hmm.
But it was more than one phone call.
Understood, understood.
So, so as those safety issues come in, you're gonna have a direct line?
We appreciate that. Mr. Peterson has one more question, then we're gonna let you guys off the hook for right now.
I don't wanna get into a lot of this because, like you said, we can all be aggravated and fight with each other all night. I hear what I'm hearing and you're working the right direction with our administrative staff, and that's what I'm looking for. My only concern still is the bus routes. We're handling it with dry weather now and we're running some pretty tight routes. As adverse weather starts to set up on us in the next month, are we going to be able to adjust these or accommodate now so we don't start running behind again because of weather? There's nothing you can do if you get two feet of snow, I understand that, and the roads can't get plowed ahead of you or whatever, but under just normal winter conditions, you automatically start with a delay with extra traffic. And I wanna get my kids back on the bus because part of our problems and the timing element is getting buses in and out of these schools where parents are tying up the traffic area also. So I wanna get all of our kids back on the buses as much as possible without any more delays is what I'm looking at, I guess.
Okay. If I may, I wanna touch on two pieces as far as the routes go. One, you had mentioned earlier as far as the technology piece and relating to GPS and mapping in the local community. I'd like for you to share that we're actually manually mirroring data right now to where we're not relying on software to tell us the next step. I want you to have that confidence. As we get the software manipulated into the right adjustments and the right comfort level for the right piece, then that'll be kind of the threshold, the going-forward point for next year and future years here. So I wanted to comment on that. And as far as the actual routes, Mr. Himmelberger, I believe, identified 11th bus that has been on the roads for AM and PM. And we are, at this point, still, you know, looking at the overloads or overcrowding situations and adding those stops onto those. And we're also making some adjustments with that to where we can get assistance and support for other routes that exist in the district, you know, trying to get all the times down as best as possible so we can try to anticipate for some bad weather or inclement, you know, conditions. And of course, you know, try to have the most efficient route. So yes, we are trying to adjust with that 11th vehicle right now, the most efficient scenarios, so we don't have to have odd days where we run exceptionally late.
Okay.
And I think it's important to know that, one of the things we did last weekend with Norm and Neil is in those exception situations, we identified buses for the students in case parents can't get there to pick their students up on adverse weather days when we may go home early. We have bus and bus routes established for all those students as a backup. So we, we went student by student at Norm's school and identified every student to a bus last Saturday. And we're in the process of doing that for Barton with the same level of information for all those students at Barton also.
Great. Mrs. DeWittzek?
I just wanted to say that I think you've given us some more information. I thank you for coming in because we didn't have it, as you all know. And I think communication, we just learned, is huge again because we do hear partials and not being able to contact you. I think the biggest thing for us, and we'll take on this side, this has exposed a lot of things. It was a change. It's been like 20 some odd years, and we may have moved the line a few times over those years, and we've had to take care of maybe six or eight children, and we've done that. But this was really a whole redistricting. And it exposed a lot of things that I don't think we were aware of also. So I guess we're all gonna learn from this and it's gonna be a continuing process, even though we're gonna strive for perfection, we will probably fall short, but we will keep striving for it. And if we can keep the communication between you, superintendent and us, we'll do our part too, because I think we've learned some things too over this experience and that we've just gotta take it that way, because we're gonna go forward. A pound of flesh isn't gonna really do anything for anybody right now. So if we just continue learning and doing better, and then we can do our job too. So I appreciate everybody coming forth and giving some key information likewise.
Thank you very much, Mrs. DeWittzek. Mrs. Coonan?
You've gotta kind of see it from our point as well. So not only were we, the committee, told that, trust me, you know, bus routes won't be an hour long, but we, the parents, were also told the same thing. And to have the first day of school happen and all of a sudden, basically, all hell breaking loose, you know, I get, I get the exceptions, I've been through computer upgrades and all of that. My first thought was, why didn't we go back to whatever the old way was with, I don't know, the map and the thumbtacks or something to determine where the students were and what last year looked like? So I'm glad to hear that we are back, although I truly believe that we need to move forward, I'm good with that, but this is one piece where, you know, we, it's too bad we didn't see the results, you know, kind of going together at the same time. My question is, is with the parent pickups right now, because parents have lost a little faith, my understanding is that parent pickups are crazy and we don't, we have a lot more parent pickups maybe than what we had expected, what we should have. How is that going to work over the next couple of weeks when, when the buses start moving on the correct schedule and everything's going great and, okay, I'm gonna put Susie back on the bus? How is this gonna work with overcrowding, the 11th bus, all of those pieces?
Coonan, I think we'll have Mr. Himmelberger answer that question for you.
Okay.
Through the chair to Mrs. Coonan, I think Keith and I are about to say the same thing. Parent pickup was adversely affected because of the poor level of service on the buses. And we have many more people delivering their students and picking up their students by car. And we know that that was out of control as well, that a couple of days later than Tuesday, Wednesday, it was Thursday and Friday. Yesterday, we made sure that we had the police available, we made sure that we were there en masse, we had some parent volunteers as well. And all parents, and I can speak certainly for Chaffey because I was there the last two days, were very understanding, and probably a third of them said, yes, we didn't pick up and drop off last year, we're doing that in reaction to the bus issue. As Keith stated, those students who have registered as the preference for the bus, we have space for them. So as the parent pickup numbers subside, as I expect they will, we had 10 fewer today at Chaffey than we had yesterday. And it was very orderly and very civil, and everyone was, was, was very cooperative. That I would expect that, yes, the numbers will go down, which will ease the, the timing and the flow of parent pickup, but we also have those, space for those students on the buses. So as, as that balances and rebalances out and adjusts, we should be good.
Okay.
Great.
And just one last thing, are we ready to communicate to parents for 92? I mean, is that...
Yes.
Central office?
Yes. As I stated before, by the end of day Thursday, we will have those routes vetted, completely checked, and we will plan on posting them, if not Thursday, late Friday.
Okay.
And we will, and we'll also make sure that the committee gets copies of those routes.
Good.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, I wanna really thank you for coming in tonight. That was the right thing to do, to really show the community that you are behind this and that we are doing the right thing and we're all working together to make sure that this happens correctly. So again, I thank you and the committee thanks you for coming in tonight and kind of telling us what's happening. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The only other thing I have on the agenda tonight is we do have a request for executive session. So I move that the board convene an executive session pursuant to General Laws 30A, Section 21A, Subparagraph Number 3, "For the purpose of discussing strategy with respect to collective bargaining, as to the bargaining unit represented by the Oxford Education Association, since such discussion in an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the school committee's bargaining position."
So I move.
Second.
Could I have a vote on that? Mrs. DeWittzek?
Yes.
Mrs. Coonan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
I had one question. Are we reconvening for any action or not?
No, we will reconvene to adjourn.
Okay, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I also vote yes, we are now in executive session. Can we just get that door and get it shut off?
I did.
No, there's...
I just administration...
All these other guys are staying.